I'll call the commission meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
Residing Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. If you all will join me with quick. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Last day of July, oh, this summer has flown by. Okay, we have one item that we're going to remove from the agenda. We're not going to do a closed session today. That will be scheduled at not for 9:30 on Monday morning. The rest of it will need to approve the agenda, the consent agenda. We do have minutes and financials that we need to approve. We have on minutes, we have July 21st. That's a closed session. It was per litigation in real estate. We have on July 24th a regular session, on July 28th a regular session, on July 29th a regular session, and on 29th of July a closed session for real estate. Need a motion to approve the concessions in the state.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And just want to pay compliments, Matty. Thank you very much. So many minutes and I virtually never find a mistake in what you do. Great job. Great job. I mean, it's not easy. It's not easy to record and everything that's being said. We want accuracy and you guys knew that, so I really appreciate that. Okay, first item on the agenda today is EMA's second quarter report.
Excellent.
Good to see you.
You too. How are you guys doing?
We're hanging in there.
Good, good. So I made the assumption that this is in your packets, but I didn't actually verify that. Is that in your packets? Okay, all right. As I walked in, I thought, man, I should have verified that information.
We got it.
Excellent. Good deal, good deal. So I provided you some bullet points just over some of the highlights of what's gone on over the last quarter. That, I won't go over everything because that would be kind of boring, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. So I've just highlighted a few things that I thought might be most interesting to you. Under partner engagement, we did activate Mostert One a couple of times this quarter. And that was primarily, it was for a couple of different functions, but primarily to assist Green County. They had a couple of wind events this last quarter. And so we activated Mostert One to help with a volunteer reception center, to help with taking phone calls, to help with finding volunteers and things like that. We also, under education, we have two cert classes in the last quarter and graduated close to forty folks.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Mostert One, we are planning, so as you may remember, we had our first annual volunteer conference in February and we have decided to go ahead and do that again. So we've begun planning for the 2026 volunteer conference. We did have myself and two volunteers go up and take a three-day course on wide area search. And so that is searching primarily after disasters and that's something that we are now a little bit more educated and prepared for. We have started the hazard mitigation planning process, which is every five years. We're actually working on that as we speak. Cheryl and Phil are working on contacting folks and getting folks contacted for that. We are holding a tabletop exercise in August, which I believe you've been made aware of. And we also had a communications exercise within the last quarter. And we found some faults in the system and so we're working on correcting those.
This tabletop exercise you're having, it's in Billings in August, is it going to be similar or the same to the one we attended earlier this year?
It's going to be different. It's going to be different, yes. So this one is going to be a train derailment. I mean, it'll be a similar process, but the focus area will be train derailment rather than recovery. In terms of medical reserve corps, we did complete our strong grant. And one of our goals through that strong grant was to improve our score through the technical assistance assessment. And that did go up, I want to say 12 points maybe, and it's like a 200-point scale. So we are, you know, improving that medical reserve corps foundational piece in order to move forward and be able to better respond to things like pandemics. And then we added a new module to our Futurity software so that we'll be able to better respond to resource needs for individuals when they're impacted by disaster. And we also had a gentleman whose home was destroyed in one of the wind events, I'm forgetting which one, at this point in time. And we were able to connect him with resources and get him assistance so that he can now be living in a safer home. So those are some of the highlights from this quarter. What questions do you have?
Very good. Any comments or questions? I just got a couple of things. I won't be able to be at the training in August on the train derailment. That interests me. I know as a kid growing up, my dad and I had a nine-by-12 piece of plywood and I had train derailments all the time.
Oh.
And so I might be a little bit of an expert on that. It's been a long time ago. But I thought that was kind of funny when I saw your notice. But one of the things I want you to pass back to Phil and Cheryl and yourself is the fact that I really appreciate the information that you send out, like when storms are coming up, when the heat weather alert that you've put out the other day, I think is good. I shared that on my Facebook post. I have a lot of older folks that follow myself on Facebook, so I appreciate that. How many volunteers do we keep track of, the number of volunteers that we have potentially available when we have a crisis?
Yes, we do. I would not be able to give you that exact volunteer because we add so frequently. So I think folks who have taken our cert class, I think it's about 1,400 people over the last 20 years who have taken our cert class.
See, that's amazing. Such a small staff, but probably one of the best departments in the state, in the country, and still yet we have all these volunteers. So if something would happen, I think we're prepared.
Yeah, our volunteers are, I mean, the lifeblood of our organization. So I am very proud.
Pass all those back on. I tell you what, that's good. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Okay, next item on the agenda is resource management. Mr. Todd, update on the county plaza. Looks like the meeting's moving along.
It is. Provided you with a supplement to the update that I try to get to you on Mondays before the agenda deadline. We are down to the end of the line on getting this onsite clinic up and running. We did a walkthrough on Monday to create a punch list of the minor items that need touch up and completion. Got yesterday about 126-page summary of every paint touch up and anything else that needs to be done. And there's tradesmen over there working on that as we speak to finish all of that. Shouldn't take too long. Richard is making preparations to provide the custodial service over there, getting supplies and so forth in place, ready to go. We did have the Ozark Fire Department out to inspect the fire protection system and it passed just fine, so that's great. And I would expect that DeWitt's cleaning crew will be over there probably later today and tomorrow doing a final deep cleanup of the space. As far as electric installation, that saga, we had a miracle yesterday. Somehow, all of the emails and phone calls from whoever, they were out there pulling wire yesterday morning and shockingly, they got it all pulled by 1:30 in the afternoon. So given them a show up, didn't get a lot done. So there's remaining work, of course. They have to make connections in all the junction boxes with the wire and eventually get that all synced up with a main transformer that would serve the building. And part of that involves having a pad built to Liberty Spex to mount that on. And things were great yesterday as I was typing this up and then I got an email and said they ran into some rock back behind the building. So they're going to have to do a little bit of rock breaking to get that in there properly, but that shouldn't be a big obstacle, but I have no doubt that it will come with some sort of pricing. As far as the rest of the site goes, ESS is doing the final grading and rolling of the parking lot base today. And I expect that tomorrow and perhaps Monday that they will be laying those final lifts of asphalt. They'll also be finishing up the road, the asphalt on that. There is that area near the entrance where we still got the issue with bright speed lowering their line. Plan is to leave that open and come back and surface that with concrete. And it would just be the extension of the existing concrete that's there coming off of Jackson Street. And that's probably not the worst thing in the world. It's good to have that heavier surface there for trucks and whatever. It takes a lot of wear. As far as potential change orders or added costs, still waiting on ESS and Great River to put together a deductive change order related to that excess topsoil. Hopefully I can present that to you next week. That would be a good thing. That'll be a savings. Still waiting on an accurate estimate on the cost to resolve the bright speed issue. We're going to do everything we can to wrestle with them and get that down to something small enough. And as I mentioned, that small rock breaking issue that just appeared, it's not a large area, but I have no doubt there will be some small cost associated with it. That's really all I have right now. We are ready to hand over the landing space to Cary ATC on Monday.
So we're on schedule for Monday?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Any comment or questions?
We're just leaving that entrance off of 14 will be gravel until bright speed's done, basically.
Yeah.
And then we'll have that road part shut down for a day to let it pour and carry it, basically?
Yeah, they'll just have to enter it from...
Yeah, the other side.
From 25th Street.
Got you. Should be a day, yeah.
All right, very good. Mark and I go out there Friday afternoon, will we be in the way?
Not a...
Just to visit? Just look around?
Come on out.
Okay, all right, very good. I appreciate that update. The next item we have for you is amendment to zoning regulations. This is Article 3 that we're dealing with.
Yes. So it's been a couple of weeks now, but we were planning to have a look at these and essentially table that for a little while and decided that amendment to Article 3 is one that we certainly could handle and get that knocked out of the way. So that particular amendment is relatively small and it's related to the Article 47.5 of the zoning regulations, which deals with groundwater recharge protection area maps. So we laid the groundwork to be able to adopt protected areas. And this amendment would be the actual adoption of one of those areas. The requirements in Article 47.5 are that those wanting to have us consider establishing such an area provide, you know, appropriate study and report and so forth, and also to delineate the area that will be protected. And that has been done. I had sent a copy, it's a substantial document of the process that was used by Ozark Underground Laboratory in coordination with the Department of Conservation and the City of Ozark. And that resulted in another report from the City of Ozark, which you've all seen. Ultimately, it came up with the shape of the groundwater protection area that we will label GRPA number one. Should have a map that was attached and just include all those. Essentially, it's that area around the Smallen Cave area. So this amendment is very brief. It simply adds that there is a GRPA area labeled G1 that would be added to the zoning regulations. And also, we would associate this particular map with it so that if a project comes in within that area, we can refer to the map and say, hey, this area requires us to look at slightly higher standards for development and hopefully provide some additional protection to vulnerable resources. I have an order prepared and a copy of the perfected article with the changes in it. Happy to answer any questions.
And this is just Article 3, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just glad to get this issue taken care of and working in conjunction with the City of Ozark and all the efforts that have been put forward to try to save our natural resources and not inconvenience necessarily any development in the process of doing that.
And this has been a good test case, so to speak, so that if there's other areas that need to be looked at, we know what to do in the process from when you're following. It'd be good.
Yeah, I would just say this, that this shows how the City of Ozark, a municipality, can work with the county. And it shows us how sometimes things that happen in the city can affect the county and how sometimes things that happen in the county can affect the city, vice versa. And because we've done this and it's taken us a while, we've been working on this for quite some time. And beginning with the City Council of Ozark and then with the commission and back and forth, planning and zoning and things like this, I think a lot of working together. This is just the start of any part else. I think you mentioned that in the county, if we see a situation like we saw in Smallen Cave, then we can do something about that and protect everything, protect our land, protect our environment. So I really appreciate it. Need a motion to approve the order?
Make a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning regulations in Article 3?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And Mr. Todd, we will sign that. All right. This one will be... Thank you. All right. All right. Get her bringing that up, right? Usually keep it back over. I took it out the other way. Where are you? Right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item under commission board update. And so we've got, Mr. Williams has got a really important document he's been working on.
So we had several boards that we needed to have updated, and so today we're working on bringing those boards up to date. We'll have board renewals for the Senior Citizen Service Fund Board, for the Christian County LRF Board, and then also for the Christian County Buildings Commission Board. So before we do the motion to approval, we need to make a motion to appoint one of the current commissioners to that board. And I would volunteer to take that role if that's something you guys would approve.
Very good.
To the Building Commission Board.
Building Commission Board.
I have no objection to you observing that capacity.
Okay, sir, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I can make that motion to appoint Commissioner Williams to the Christian County Building Commission.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Jackson. I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you, congratulations, are the new member on that.
Then I would like to make a motion to approve the list of renewals and new appointees for the Senior Citizen Service Fund Board, the Christian County LRF Board, which is the law enforcement restitution fund, and for the members of the Christian County Building Commission.
Okay, we need a motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made it. I'm sorry.
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Well, I tell you what, thank you very much, Commissioner Williams. So for the people that's watching online and that's here today, this has been something that we've actually been working on for several years. Even when I got here in 2020, we didn't have an accurate list of who was on what board and when their terms expired, how to get ahold of them, just et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We just did not have good records. And Commissioner Williams took that task on and has completed it and will have that online. We're going to have that online so the public can see it. They'll know. So what's really important is we have so many great people in our county that might be interested in running for a position, a volunteer to be on a board, but they never knew when the terms expired. They didn't know when there was a vacancy. Different things were going on. And so I think this is going to really help our county, just like we heard just a while ago, that volunteers are the lifeblood of our county and of all these boards, that we couldn't do without all these volunteers. And so now we have an accurate record of when terms are going to expire and we'll all be able to, the commissioners will be able to have it. We'll have a notebook here, we'll be able to glance at it right away. If the public wants to know, they can see it online or they can talk to us and we'll have that record. So thank you very much for doing that. Okay, next item is commission communications. And do anybody have communications to go on? Do you want to mention anything about Friday night again or Saturday? We got something?
Oh, the Surtola Club is having downtown market days on Square Saturday, so come down and scorch your local vendors.
Yeah, so 9:00 to...
It's 9:00 to 4:00.
9:00 to 4:00, okay. So I hope that people will come down, beautiful square, the flowers are blooming out there, grass is still green and the flowers are blooming. So I hope people will come and support the Surtola Club and do that. One thing that I mentioned a while ago is Judge Johnson, just for us to think about. Judge Johnson, through Cindy Childress, wants to have a commission meeting go over in August, the '26 budget for the court system. The date that she wanted was August 18th at 8:30. We need to do it at 8:30 to accommodate her court schedule and we can do that. But August 18th is not a good day, so I will work with Cindy today. I'll get you back another date. Monday seems to be the best day for her. It's probably a pretty good day for most of us, most of the time, so we'll figure that out in August and we'll make sure that our auditor is here and that we go over the first preliminary discussion of an important budget for the county. So that's coming up in August. And we did postpone the, like I said a while ago, the closed session that we had scheduled for today. We postponed it till Monday at 9:30. So anything else that we need to communicate?
I will get you to know. I want you guys to know, if you go to our website, shanemo.gov, there is now a link we've created, a quick link to go to Cary ATC, so that we have a landing page now for that. It gives a lot of information, just kind of what we've already been sharing. We're going to send this out to employees today so they can start to look at it. There is going to be an app. People can, and when you go to the landing page today, you can actually, you can go in and set up an account and eventually you'll be able to make your own appointments there. But my team actually did a training yesterday where we're going to be able to set appointments for people as well because not everybody is computer savvy or wants to download an app. So we do, we are going to have access to setting the appointments for people if they want to. They can also call. I mean, it's not like, I mean, you can do it anyway, but the landing page is live, so that is exciting.
That is good.
And they're going to take over on the 4th. They have three weeks to get their operations set up and to train their people. And then we are set for the soft opening on the 25th and grand opening on the 30th. That's September.
Very good, very good. I'm glad you made that announcement. So I just want to mention, you know, in the time I've been here, we were talking about the clinic back in 2020 and just developmental stages at that time. I've had people ask me why we would want to have a health clinic for our employees. Why would we spend the money? I've simply told people that I have always felt that employees are our most important asset. They certainly are in this county. And what I've realized, and Ms. Amber's taught me that, other people have taught me that, is a lot of our employees don't have a family practice doctor. They don't have someone to go to on a regular basis, like a lot of us have, a doctor that I think, unfortunately, I have to go too many times to my regular doctor. But some people don't. And so you know what they do is when they get sick, they go to urgent care or the emergency room, the two most expensive places to go, places you need at certain times, but not when you just need to see a doctor a lot of times.
Expensive for us and expensive for...
Correct.
Expensive for us and expensive for...
Well, yeah. It is very expensive to the employee because the co-pays are much more expensive and it's expensive to us, hoping that, one, that we improve our health of our employees to where they'll be healthier and not have to miss work and not have, and find out things before it gets serious. And, two, to save on our insurance premiums because if we pay that 100% for that employee, our health insurance premiums are going straight up every year. And so we're hoping that if we can stay healthier and we can save our employees money, then it also will save the county, which saves taxpayers' money. And so that's why that clinic, and we've got to make that clinic work. And then I'm interested in finding out, we have more space in that first building and what will be moving next? And we'll be telling our citizens that later on. Okay? Okay, anything else that we need to talk about? Otherwise, enjoy the weather today. It's going to be better. You're adjourned.